All right, I call to order Highland Park Board of Education Hybrid Regular Public Meeting for December 12. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the regular public to have advance notice of and attend meetings in public bodies in which any business or faculty interests is discussed throughout the time. It's applying to the Open Public Meetings Act, Highland Park Education has closed notice of meetings, sending forth a time, date, and location. To be submitted is publication for the Home News Review, Ad Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website will use 48 hours in advance this meeting. Remember, the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board turns to me. Ms. Cassaldon?
Here.
Ms. Simorasty? Ms. Coleman? Ms. Gallin? Mr. Greger?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Danfeller?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Roslavage? Mr. Woodland?
Here.
Ms. Coleman. Okay, we are going to move to executive session. Being resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act and JSA 10:4-1213, the Highland Park Board of Education will now need enclosed session to conduct a parent requested impatriated, hip, and student discipline. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session according to the NJSA 10:4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. So I move that we reset to executive session, who are the seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, I move that we convene to regular session, who are the seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had no communications at fault in both that. We need to approve the minutes from the hybrid public workshop and executive session meetings from November 7th, and the hybrid public regular and executive session meetings from November 1st. So I move that we approve those minutes, who are the seconds? Okay. Ms. Cassaldon?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gallin?
Yes.
Mr. Greger?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Danfeller?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Roslavage?
Yes.
Mr. Woodland?
Yes.
Okay, we keep moving along, we have our two reports, I'm glad you both here, same again, Irving, yeah.
So we're Irving, the PTO will have their annual holiday market on December, I mean, on Wednesday and Thursday, and the family shopping night will be Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the MBE Center. Also Coffee with the Principal will be tomorrow by 8:30 a.m., and the Winter Singalot will be next, December the 1st, and information will follow.
Bartle Coffee with the Principal will be tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. The monthly whole school meeting will be this Friday, and their winter concert will be December 92nd at 7:00 p.m.
The middle school, senior congress at the middle school is running another spiritware sale. Orders will be placed online until Friday, and proceeds will help field trips, will help fund field trips in other best of middle school, thank you for our support. And they're also running a World Cup incentive program, students can earn tickets by exhibiting respectful, responsible behavior, and students earn 10 tickets, they earn the opportunity to watch orchestra during the day. Also, the winter concert for choir, band, orchestra is going to be on Thursday at 7 o'clock in the high school auditorium.
And lastly for the high school, the winter concert for the choir, orchestra, and band will be at 7:00 p.m. tomorrow, so please come and support the high school. The winter assembly will be December 23rd, and the African American Culture Club and Deco will be selling holiday grams this week, as well as the Red Cross Club, which will start selling next week.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes. Will any of the concerts be available, like remotely?
Yeah, can you move closer to the mic, I'm sorry.
My question was if any of the concerts will be available remotely? If you're not sure, that's okay.
I'm not sure, but I can get back to you.
Any questions? Thank you very much. And we move towards our conference report.
I have a great report tonight, I personally could turn the microphone over to Ms. Brady, who is with us at home on Zoom due to an emergency situation, but she's with us, so Ms. Brady, I'm going to toss the mic over to you for our student's pop microphone.
Thank you so much, please let me know if the volume is too loud. Because I get excited about these things, so I don't want it to come across as any love I mean, I know how I can be. First, Ahmad, and I assume this right, is there to, my buddy?
Hi.
I want to apologize personally for not being there, I talked to him a lot this morning, I was like, I can't wait to be there, I was so excited to celebrate you, and my sincerest apologies for not being there, I was with every intention that I meant to be, so circumstances change though, so I'm here in spirit and in all my love to support you because this is so well deserved, and I can't wait to share everything that all the teachers have to say about you, so Ahmad, I'm going to start with Ms. Anand. So, Ms. Anand said Ahmad is a positive role model to his peers. Every day at the door, he responds to my greetings with a smile and hello, and leaves my classroom with have a great rest of the day, Ms. Anand. He possesses a great sense of humor and makes his friends laugh. Ahmad comes to class with a great attitude and takes his learnings seriously. He takes feedback and applies it to his work, trying to improve every step of the way. Ahmad not only tries his best in class, but also encourages other students who may be struggling to focus to do their best. He is a friendly and helpful leader who can be a mentor to his classmates. He is truly deserving of students' modeling. So Ms. G said Ahmad is a remarkably mature, poised, and kind individual. He takes pride in his work and is a true learner. He is curious, self-motivated, and responsible. Ahmad treats everyone with respect and empathy and is a leader and a role model for his peers. Ms. Mark says, I love this Ahmad, Ahmad is a gentle old soul, he is so mature compared to his peers and is usually the voice of reason with his friends. He comes in every day, always greeting each teacher he sees, and continues to do so every time that he sees them throughout the day. Academically, Ahmad is one of the strongest students in our class. His ability to follow directions without any clarification is impressive and appreciative. I wish I could clone Ahmad. I do too. He is so very deserving of this honor. Ms. Berlou said Ahmad is a conscientious, contri- intrinsically, excuse me, motivated student who maintains a positive attitude in all that he does. Ahmad is well liked by his peers and is a friend to all. He's a natural leader and mature beyond his years. He is well-rounded in all aspects of his life. Ahmad has a natural ability to encourage others, both in his words and his kind smile. Ms. Hawthorne said Ahmad is a leader in and out of the classroom. He is a constant positive influence and contributes to the school community by setting an example for his peers on a daily basis. He always enters the classroom with a smile and a polite greeting. He is conscientious and puts his best effort forth in all that he does. He is so deserving of this recognition, congratulations Ahmad. Mr. Dagman said there are many great things I could say about Ahmad. He's courteous, kind, cheerful, and respectful, as well as focused and positive and determined to do well in all of the class endeavors. That all being said, what I will address is the positive presence that he adds. Ahmad conveys a sense of positivity around to him, which is infectious, not only to me, but also to his peers, who genuinely enjoy his presence in class. He sorely missed when he's absent. Just recently, when taking attendance and it was noted that he was out, there was an audible "aww" from his peers, and I was both touched and impressed by this. I believe that this moment, combined with all of his other attributes, truly sums up who Ahmad is and what he means to this academic institution. Well done, everyday sir. That was from Mr. Dagman, I thought that was wonderful. I'm going to read what Ms. Suppo said next, and then add a little bit myself, because we have similar sentiments, so Ms. Suppo, interestingly enough, Ahmad, when I'm asked to nominate a star student, I always ask everybody, and I want feedback so that I can kind of decide who is most deserving. So I sent out the email, and the first person to respond within seconds was Ms. Suppo. And she said, Ahmad, right, and I said, 100%. And then as soon as that, I put it out there, I got all the wonderful glowing merch that I've just read, so let me read Ms. Suppo's too. Every morning when we welcome the students into school, Ahmad welcomes me, he says, good morning, Ms. Suppo, with a smile. In the lunchroom, when students leave garbage behind at his table, he encourages them to pick up or just throws it out himself. Ahmad is a positive role model for his peers and is not afraid to lead his friends away from negative decisions and influences, influences more positive ones. Ahmad's smile is contagious, and he deserves to be recognized for his positive energy, positive attitude, and positive influence he has on others. I can't say enough about this young man. I always talk about, when I have the opportunity, the influence that a friendly hello has on people, and Ahmad, you do it right, my friend. You come in every single morning, and Ms. Suppo and I are standing there, we say good morning to students as they come in, every single student. And without fail, you say good morning to us, and by name. And I don't think you know how, what big of a deal that is. You know, we have 370 students come in and a handful say morning back, and you say not only good morning, but like, morning, Brady, a great day, blessed day, you know, all of this gets, it's, it changes your day. It really does, and I don't think that you even know what a big deal you have on me. And you do the same when you leave. Every single day, you take time out of whatever's going on in your world to say goodbye to me, and to have a wonderful day, to have a nice party, and I think all of your teachers really put that kind of down, because it means so much to us, and I don't think you recognize how big of an impact you have, but I hope that you continue to do it, and I hope it catches on, because everything that you do is contagious, and you keep doing it, and you keep being that role model, because people will follow, and it really and truly makes a huge difference, and I'm telling you that from my heart, my friend. So there's really nobody who deserves this more than you, and I could not be happier. I said that I'm not going to celebrate with you, but I just want to offer you my sincerest congratulations. So, thank you Ahmad for everything that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Brady, and.
Sure, and I'm sure everyone else, and I'm going to share all of these things with you, Ahmad, so that you have them as a sun to look back on, and keep you inspired, okay?
I'll send the pictures to you, Brady, which.
Oh, wonderful.
If you can post them on the website with permission.
Yes, we will.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations, thank you so much, thanks to guys.
I'm going to move on to the next part of my presentation, Ms. Brady, you're more than welcome to stay, come around, but I think you had a need, a need for a quiet night.
That's right, now see you guys soon, thanks so much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Bye.
I'm going to move on to the next part of my presentation, to recognize a very special board member who will be ending her term tonight with the Board of Ed, I actually invited Ms. Brady to come on from the HPEA to speak as well, so I have some words to say, some probably a lot, and then I'm going to cast the mic over to Marilyn, and then to board members, and then Ms. Brady, I'll open it up to you as well, because I know you'd like to speak as well. So, good evening Highland Park. Tonight, we have the great pleasure of recognizing a truly outstanding member of our community for her service on the Board of Education, Ms. Darcy Simorasty. Darcy's incredible service on the Board of Education began 10 years ago with her term unfortunately coming to an end tonight. While we can easily spend all evening discussing her seemingly endless accomplishments and dedication while in office, I'd like to share a handful of some of what made and makes Darcy such an inspiring force and wonderful member of the Board of Education. First and foremost, Darcy's strong convictions and tenacity have supported public education over the years in ways that are truly invaluable. Under her leadership, the board passed several resolutions to fight the expansion of charter schools in Middlesex and Somerset counties, including the Tika Charter School. Her fight also includes ensuring that charter and non-public schools are held at the same budget cut to constraints as their public school counterparts. Additionally, she spearheaded the passing of a resolution to urge state senators to vote against the confirmation of Betsy DuBose, who advocated for charter and toy schools as well. Next, we appreciate Darcy's commitment to the students as chair of the Policy and Regulations Committee, in which she created an efficient process for reviewing and adopting policies and regulations. She also served as a crucial member of the Finance and Facilities Committee, and as a delegate to the New Jersey School Boards Association. Quite notably, Darcy has been a staunch supporter of the whole child approach to education of all students. She recognized and believes that true education is not only focused on academic growth as a measure of a young person's success, but the whole child, whose vision includes cognitive, social, emotional, moral, ethical, identity, and physical, mental well-being as all crucial components. This can be best exemplified in Darcy's advocacy against state testing and against the use of standardized tests to count as a graduation requirement. Our students are more than a test score. We would be remiss if we didn't mention her work as board president. Here, she supported the community in many different ways, passing a resolution to name the football field after beloved community member Joseph Pola Castro, supporting the borough's effort to provide safe ways for students at Bartle to walk and bike to school, and her unending active involvement in all things Highland Park public schools, to name a few. As your superintendent of schools, I want to sincerely thank Darcy for her unwavering commitment to us all. I want to thank her family. Being a public servant and serving as a board member requires a time commitment that is really hard to fathom. There are often not enough hours in a week to serve on the Board of Ed, let alone accomplish all that Darcy has accomplished. It goes way beyond the time seen at public meetings and monthly committee meetings. It requires tons of research, tons of documents to review, lots and lots of ongoing communication with any and all hour during during any and all hours of the day and night, and too much more to list. That sacrifice of the most precious of all commodities known as time severely limits how much you can spend with the ones you love, so to Darcy's family, we also owe you a huge amount of gratitude, thank you. On a very personal note, there are not enough words to express my gratitude and appreciation for all Darcy can done for me. Getting to know her and learning what she is all about reinforced my confidence that taking a leadership position here in Highland Park was the right decision for me. Her example as a strong female leader has given me and several others confidence, and I am no doubt she will continue to inspire others. I have learned a ton from watching her approach to educational policy, advocacy, and consistency. She is truly leaving the Highland Park Board of Ed a better place than what she found it. Darcy, I hope you take encouragement from your incredible and inspiring progress, and continue to make a difference for our students with your future endeavors. Our school district, Board of Ed, and community is better because of you. Thank you. I believe there was something that came to your house, possibly?
Things come from my house all day.
Okay. One from, one from the Board of Ed and school district, but also in addition. Here. Oh, here we have, we have her plaque, that has her, her name, yeah, her name tagged, it says, with grateful appreciation for your years of dedication, your dedicated service as a member of the Highland Park Board of Ed, Darcy Simorasty, December 31st, 2022.
Thank you. Ms. Cruz, I'd like to open up the floor.
I'll put a caveat to Mark, he's been on behalf of the board. It's not anybody else that wants to, but.
Yeah.
I know Mark's already prepared.
Please drop me if you have anything to say. So when I first joined the Board of Education in February 2016, Darcy was president of the board. She served as president in 2016, then again in 2017, and 2018, and 2019. When I say that Darcy had three full-time jobs, raising her family, working in education policy, and being president of the Highland Park Board of Education. And it is, by the way, a full-time job, being president of Board of Education here. Darcy is a great leader and a great friend. Intelligent, energetic, courageous, committed to equity and excellence in the Highland Park School District. Some examples of that. Under Darcy's leadership, as her school district became more and more underfunded, and as charter schools were siphoning off more and more money from the Highland Park School District, Darcy went to the state legislature and to the courts, working to give our district and students our fair share. Under Darcy's leadership, we passed the first school district policy in New Jersey to give transgender students their rights in our schools. It's hard to forget the board meeting in May 2016, I was just on the board a few months then, when we passed Policy 5756, with the local and New York City press covering our meeting, and that's the policy on transgender student rights in schools. Under Darcy's leadership, the words equity and excellence became a top strategic goal of our district. And she led us to solidify that goal with the formation of our Equity and Excellence Committee. One example of this work at the high school is to make honors and AP classes more accessible to students, especially students from disadvantaged families. Another is leveling the field to provide our students, well before the pandemic, with Chromebooks, so that all students have access and have access to the internet. While this is Darcy's last board meeting for this term, after nine years of service in our community, there was always the 2023-2024 school year, or the 2024-25 school year, or the 2025-26 school year. Those are the years I would have been serving, serving. And I'm looking forward to serving on one of these boards again with my friend, Darcy Simorasty.
Is that enough, say?
Just make sure you talk into the microphone. Thank you.
I'm going to keep it really short, you know, one question. The reason that I'm involved is because of Darcy. So, if anyone has definitely enjoyed the time that I've ever done on board, it's because of Darcy. Thank you.
I had to really, I forgot why I had to say that. It's just to see you here, first of all, in person, it's special in itself, but to have to know that this is your last meeting of this term, it is definitely, you will show my gratitude, that's why I say probably the better. I do want to thank you for my contribution, and thank you for understanding who I am as a board member, and what I go up to and where I started, and then in terms of what you feel, which I conservations that I appreciate, so I said, and I knew that I knew I knew I had a question, and I knew I knew something. I really want to thank you for being here, for your support, more than anything else, personally. And then also just to say, I really hope that each of us can kind of take a piece of what you brought to the board, and kind of let that continue to motivate us, inspire us, and encourage us to continue the work that you did, and bring it on in individual ways, because your presence and your voice doesn't need to end, just because you're not formally a board member, you have the most people that we should really call these. What you brought to the board, you have to continue, kind of make, to deepen that work, to broaden this network, to do more of this network, and make it even better. I applaud your presentation. So, I will miss you, but.
I will miss you, and thank you for saying that I encouraged you to be on the board, not that I insulted you. At a community meeting in the high school auditorium, and my heart, hi, I'm Darcy, how'd you like to be on the board? I don't know if encouraging, what's quite the word, so I just, you know. Thank you.
What morning that was totally well set, it was really.
Yeah.
Sorry for my earlier sacrifice on the board, I did hear a little bit, the one remote, and then that first, that first couple of months when I was appointed, then I was at home, not really knowing what was going on, I said, who do you have a call, someone called Darcy, right? So I said, I hope you don't mind, give me some information, you're like a voice on the board that seemed to me like the right first of all, first patient. And obviously, this is here for more, he said, we all have a pickup here, and for your, for your, things you can talk about here, and go forward with it. And even though you're not on the board, you have a seat down there, or on Zoom, and keep, keep going, don't let us talk about the, the wide one here, on important issues.
Got it. I'd like to open it up to Ms. Crane, Kim Crane, you with a new yourself, and again, I, for those who don't know, Darcy has an incredibly strong relationship with the HPEA and our teachers union, has been a strong advocate and a strong collaborator, so I wanted to give them an opportunity, and thank you, Kim, for being on and speaking on every half, I'll turn the mic over to you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to honor Darcy tonight, I am so pleased to be able to say a few words on behalf of the Highland Park Education Association. Darcy has the bravest heart that I know. When our district experienced a leadership crisis, she worked to get elected to a formerly hostile Board of Education. I know that that's unbelievable, you know, now, because we work so well with our board, because she saw wrongs that needed to be righted, and relationships that needed to be rebuilt. So I'm going to revisit that part, she actively and purposely worked to get elected to a hostile environment. I mean, what kind of maniac does? The best, the best kind of maniac, and we are so grateful, because that was the spark, you know, that we needed, we needed, the district needed someone to say, hey, you know, we need to start working together with, with everyone, and everything was so disjointed at that time. And Darcy was the spark, she was the key, and, you know, we are just so grateful. As a board president, not only did Darcy lead the initiative to correct policies that were outdated and inefficient, but she also opened the channels of communication with the education association, the community administrators, individuals seeking transparency, collaboration, and innovation. Her work on the board laid the foundation for the student-focused, close-working relationship that the board and our association have to this day. Her tireless efforts to address challenges and forge forward into the ever-changing educational landscape created a period of growth and success not seen in Highland Park school for decades. Darcy has been in this work for the long haul. She tells like it is. She tells the like it is, and she backs up her words with depth. Her research on the effects of charter schools on traditional districts' budgets is always on point and second to none. As a collaborator, Darcy is thoughtful, forthright, integrous, and trustworthy. She is the leader we all aspire to be. Darcy, the HPEA, and I personally are grateful for every opportunity to work with you and look forward to many years of friendship and continuing collaboration. Our sincere thanks goes to you for everything that you have done and everything that you will continue to do. And we love you very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Very well said. Darcy, would you like to say a few words?
Not that we're on the spot.
But.
It's around us out here.
I don't feel on the spot at all. I just feel kind of overwhelmed. You know, nine-plus years. Well, not exactly since here, but, you know, on the board and with all the colleagues you see here, all the colleagues who are no longer here, whose terms are over, who've come, who've gone. It's not about any one person ever. It can't be. It's a group of nine people. And it's not even about that group of nine people, as Kim said so well. It's that collaboration. I was trying to explain this to my, I can't remember which one of my girls I was talking to in the car, maybe it was you. That the thing that I was the most proud of was getting that collaboration working again. Because when the adults in the school system aren't talking to each other, aren't listening to each other, aren't functioning, they can't do what's best for kids. They can't. They just can't. That's the only way forward, is for everyone to sit down at a table, hash out their disagreements, and come to the best solution. For the kids, because that's why we're here. I'm not here for me. Kim's not here for herself. Christina's not here for herself. We're here for the kids. So if we're here for the kids, everybody's got to be able to put their egos aside and do what's right for kids, and for all kids. So it can't ever be about our own kids. It can't be about the kids who look like our kids. It's about all of the kids. So I think that's what I'm most proud of. Out of everything, is that I know I'm leaving now with a board that understands that. Like, we'll come back if the board forgets that. Whether it be out in the audience or at the podium, or wherever that needs to be. It wasn't my intent to leave the board. But, you know, I know everyone at this table knows that with my health concerns and constraints, it's been very hard, just even in the last few years, not to be the board member that I personally aspire to be and want to be. And it's time for me to move aside and make room for people who do have the time and physical energy to dedicate it to, dedicate to the board that the kids in this district deserve. And we aspire to that. If that changes, you'll see that, I promise. Because it really is important work. And I mean, well, everyone sitting here, there's more people who don't have kids in this district than do. And to my mind, that's important because the schools aren't just for the people who have kids here. Public schools are public good. They belong to everyone. They belong to the community. And it's incumbent on the entire community to take care of the kids who are in the schools right now. So if you're out there and you're watching and you're retired, or your kids have graduated, some of us up here have been up here a long time. And people are going to be leaving, and we're going to need new people. And it's an important reporting job. So give it a shot. Give it a try. And thank you so much, Beth, for everyone, for all of your kind words and gift baskets that flooded my house. Just for being my friends and my colleagues. It's been, it's been an amazing journey. And I wish I could give you a big squeeze that I haven't seen you in person in a very long time. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
I wish we could end the meeting right now and just celebrate and enjoy. However, we do have to move on. If Darcy, you're going to have to pull for some pictures later, but we'll feel about it at the end of the meeting. Are they going to, do you want to have that in mind? Some pictures? Family pictures? Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to take a few minutes. Kim, if you want to stay on, you're more than welcome to. Now we're going to take some pictures and move on. Thank you. Thank you so much. And again, a huge thank you, Darcy, to your family, your husband, and two children. Again, I'm sure the time has been a lot more than I can even fathom, or any of us can even fathom, for all of her hard work and dedication. So I hope you feel a little bit of relief knowing that you have that time back. But again, I'm sure how incredibly proud that you are of all that she's accomplished, as we are. And thank you again for being so generous and giving up her time to us and to the community. Thank you. Please, can you report? And we are going to move on.
You have the best report ever, right?
And we need to move on to board committee reports and recommendations. So we're going to go down the list. Curriculum instruction. Michelle, we're all set. Oh, I'm sorry. Just make sure you get a little closer to the mic. I'm sorry.
We haven't met since the last meeting. And we only have one thing. I am really happy to be here. Anyway. Number two is the board of school reports. For two months of November 2022.
Thank you all.
Number three is the entire non-home instruction for two students. And that can be all the time for the students.
Nice, nice. Thank you. And any questions regarding that? No? We want Equity and Excellence.
And I have another two board reports. That just fell out of the meeting in front of me.
Right. Mark, you always have something to say.
Why, it's so.
That's true. I get into so much trouble around here. Thank you so much. So we have a lengthy committee report. It was quite a long and interesting committee report. I will not go into details, but very quickly. So we discussed making detectors in middle school and high school. I think we've talked about that for a short while. We do now have some quotes. We'll be getting more. We'll be learning what that was. We might put these in. But again, they've been very successful in other districts. And as you see in some of our reports, there's a lot of that, and it's detrimental. So committee believes we should do something. We discussed the computers, the teachers, staff, and students. Because our lease is running out this year. We'll have to do something for the 2023-2024 school year. We have proposals. Prices have come down. We can get more with the devices. So we can outfit both the parental and the middle school and the high school with some extra equipment thrown in for that $20,000 a year more than we paid in the past for many more pieces of equipment and better insurance on that equipment. So that's really excellent, and we have to do this. We did discuss maybe not so quite second and third grade. We have to talk to the principal about that. If the costs are too high, I think we probably can afford these. A residency consultant works with us when we find a family who doesn't respond to any emails or any phone calls. And we have found, let's see. We sent, found six, and that number is now up to nine children who do not live in Highland Park, have been using our schools. And that's going to continue to go up. Not surprisingly. The HPEA, a Board of Education Negotiation, to support parents working with students that have challenging behaviors is ongoing. I have nothing to report. We do project increased enrollment based both on building that's going on and also the new pre-K commitment that the state has made for both full-day four-year-old and three-year-old pre-K. So over the next few years, we do expect that to grow. And in fact, number six is the preschool space discussion. So we've been, we are going to do feasibility studies. We contacted preschools in town and in the area. Few and far between to get anybody to take full classes with certified teachers from us and help us with this. So we're probably close to on our own. Our architectures are reviewing additional classrooms, possibly, some of our buildings. We've had discussions with the center school. And we'll see what happens. But we apparently have five years of this actually happening in the state. We have written a letter to the borough about pilot programs and getting our fair share of the money. And meetings will be taking place between our president and superintendent and representatives. I expect meetings to take place between our president and superintendent and representatives of the borough to try to hash out, arguing our fair 60% of the revenues that come from pilot programs, which are programs that get money to, that have developers not pay taxes, but pay in lieu of taxes and all of that money. Virtually all of that money goes to the borough and then comes to the schools. So that's, that's a work in progress. We've, as part of our safety audit, we've been discussing possibly having identification to enter buildings. We would provide, for someone who doesn't have identification, we would, the HPEA is offered to provide cameras to produce cards, which they, the person could then use to enter the buildings. It's a deterrent. Having to have a photo ID is a deterrent. It also, God forbid, someone forks in with a gun and, you know, they've left their ID at the gate so they can't get in otherwise. But then they go in and do what's been happening around the country. It's a deterrent. And it also allows the police, if they have to come into that situation, to be able to identify the person they're looking for. So we're going to investigate that. And the staff and the safety committee needs staff and administration worth listening to. Many of them are very, very scared coming to work because of what we read in the newspapers and see on TV screens about people walking into schools with bad intentions. And then aside in safety, we have installed cameras in Barreville and Irving, or they're in the process of being put into Barreville and Irving, in addition to the high school and middle school. The state has regular district grants. These are grants for districts that aren't special in some way. They've allocated $40 million to grant funds. And we're going to apply for that grant to a roof repair replacement and ventilation. Appears to be slated for February. Hopefully, we can get a bunch of money. Italian contract. They've given us notice that the short-term increase for them to continue. They're losing money around the state. They're apparently trying to pull out of doing their service. And we are going to, I think, vote today on going out to bid for March 30th for emergency replacement of Italian. And then on June 30th, we want to have by then a new contract with the New York City Traders. And then on two other items, the before and after school program is making money this year. And it's making a fair amount of money so that itself, it can run itself without the school district having to pay for any of it. And it's good news. And we're even thinking about perhaps adding some hard-time at least administration to help manage the building. And then lastly, we updated the list of unfinished items. And we added $50,000 to that. But our surplus at the moment is substantial. So we have to pull that. And that's the report. Very likely to be a lot of discussion. Are there any questions or comments? Yeah, Chris?
So we discussed a little bit the pre-K situation.
Yes.
Could you just clarify? We do have some space now. It's not enough for everybody. We'd probably have to be a lottery. But how much space do we have right now if we wanted to do it on a lottery basis? And what's the range of possible start dates if we decided to go that route?
We don't, well, we only have room for, if we did with our current group, we'd actually be less students because it's full day. So we have rooms that share because we have an AM and an PM class. So we'd have to, if we went full day, let's say, January, we'd have to decrease our enrollment in order to make it work because we don't have the physical space for the students. We're not sure what September's going to bring. Actually, I'm glad that you brought it up. Tomorrow, Megan and I have a meeting at 11:00 AM with our contacts from the NHDIW with the early childhood and pre-K department to get some clarifying questions answered. Because we still have a lot of unknown things in terms of trying to figure out how to navigate all of this. In particular, how much is the funding? I hear it's pretty significant. We do have a question about what happens if childcare facilities cannot host. We're looking up to about 15 classes that will need to get 90% of our universe into rooms if they don't have that availability. And we go out for a bottom-up rent and to try to build or find space for them that we're hosting in-house, and that doesn't pass, what happens? So we have a lot of questions. And we also want to know the likelihood that this is going to be sustainable. The last time that we spoke to them, it was pretty much a guarantee that it was going to be sustainable. But I think we want to ask just one more time before we move forward with our plans. So right now, we wouldn't, we don't have the space to go full-time in January. We reached out to a couple of childcare centers, and a couple of them were already partnered with other local school districts for January. So that's not an option. In September, we might be able to open up two additional classes if we considered putting trailers on the asphalt at Irving. If we put two trailers on the asphalt of Irving and moved two first-grade classes out to trailers, that would free up rooms in the building for pre-K. Because remember, pre-K has to have 700 square feet minimum and the bathroom, right? So we'd have to be mindful of how it would shift it all. So we would be able to probably open up, like, two additional to make probably maybe four. I think either probably do four or five. It depends on our special ed numbers next year, but either four or five full-day classes next year. And then we would have to talk about some sort of lottery system, which, if you remember the previous Equity and Excellence Committee report, we had begun talking about it, but because we didn't have any other information. But it's always going to be on our agenda to talk about to make sure that we decide on a lottery that would be equitable for everybody involved. So, you know, that's if we want to move forward with, you know, trailers. There's a couple of things. The center school was an option. However, the owner of the center school is open to a short-term, a short-term rental for our use, but not anything long-term. And when Ms. McNally and I toured the facility, it wasn't in condition to accept our students on the spot. They would probably need some renovations and work. According to the state, the requirements for short-term housing of students for educational purposes is not as strict for code purposes as long-term. I still don't know what that means and how much that would cost to get the center school if the owner was open to even having those renovations done, considering we have some long-term plans for that building as well. So still a lot of moving parts. But hopefully tomorrow, we should have some clarity that I can bring back to all the committees involved, and we can continue the conversation. And hopefully, we should hear back from the architect soon about the feasibility study on what our options are.
Christina, I wanted to add something that I've been thinking about. At one time, there was a pre-K in the high school. I don't know if anybody else knows that yet. I mean, years ago, there was a pre-K in the high school.
My first child.
Who's there, okay. And so it wasn't big. I mean, it was like two classrooms, maybe. It's very small. But I'm wondering, not so much the high school, I'm wondering if Florida has any free classrooms. And not.
I got nothing anywhere in any building. I am busting out of seats.
Anyway, this is going to be very challenging. I don't want to talk about it so much because it's so challenging. If the state actually goes through with this, every school district is going to be in a pickle. This is going to be a complete mess for the state. It'll help families. I mean, I accept that. But great, give us $20 million to build a building and promise us for the next 20 years But great, give us $20 million to build a building and promise us for the next 20 years you're going to give us an extra $5 million to run two new class rates, two full-class rates. If they would do that, no problem. What if the referendum doesn't pass? What if there's a new, that's Chris pointed at at the last meeting. I can't stop myself from talking, so. What if that's Chris said at the last meeting, the state says, go get that bond referendum, great job, you've got the money. By the way, we've had a change of heart and a change of thought, oh, and there's a new governor, we're not going to fund it. So good luck with your building, your white elephant that you built. So I don't know, this is just typical New Jersey stuff. So I have to say.
But I also want to put a perspective to that our, not only are we busting the seams, but at Bardo, for example, we had to open up some more special education classes. And we bought these, like essentially like makeshift room dividers and we're literally splitting rooms in half now to accommodate the, the class size and because those, you know, resource room and self-contained classes do have a maximum number of students that they can hold. So yeah, I don't have room in any building.
Christina?
Christina, when, when you do speak to those experts tomorrow, one of the things that still bothers me is about trying to hit our universe target and how the funding is affected if we're, you know, if we actually do everything that we can and the state says, well, your, your target within your universe is this many students and you're still falling short. Whether or not we would still receive funding or if they would, you know, pull a rug out from underneath us just because here we have people in town who just aren't interested in sending their kids here.
Good question, I'll ask that, thank you, Rob.
Okay, with that said, the finance facilities list we're voting tonight is number two is and three and four are approval of the lists. Number 10 has two additional consultants. Coming know education institute. This is for training for our special ed IRNS. And this is being paid for with an IDA grant. And transpires education and evaluation. These are two sessions of consulting for district workshops for science teachers. That's $1,520. Number 12 has two new students for bedside instruction. Number 14 has a to-be-determined date, but that date is 3/1/2023, so I'd like to reiterate that into the record for number 14. The end should look like for a multi-year contract with the start date of March 1st, 2023. Number 15 is participating in cases, which is a co-op program. Number 16 is the approval of pre-K preschool program plan update. This is not the preschool program we were talking about, this is our current preschool plan. And number 17 is acceptance of donations through donorschoose.org. And that's the report. Questions or comments?
So this is the first, so 16 is really just what we'd normally be doing for our current plan.
Yes. Yes. It's pretty crazy, I mean.
Let's do that while we're figuring that out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
No other questions, Chris, you're up, personnel communication.
Okay, so before I forget, we have an addition, item number 20. I'm moved in the Board of Education, except the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following scheduled meeting appointment for the 2022-23 school year. This is the assistant winter track coach at the high school, Felix Rojas Martinez. For $3,335. So mostly line items, we have four is an approval of an absence, six is approval of Arlington-Burrell is a launch gear professional for Bardo Elementary School. Number 13 is the approval of brothers mentoring staff under Title I for the Highland Park Middle School on Tuesdays. Number 14 is the approval of staff for the literacy night at, at Bardo. 15 is the professional development for using decodables and other, other things. 16 is staff for training in a district workshop with data spire. And 17 is an additional instructional assignment for special ed. 18 is a volunteer and 19 is approval of a nurse for the field trip to Philadelphia. Any questions?
We'll move on to policy regulations, just the one policy?
Yeah, and it's nothing new, this is the fourth board meeting and the second of voting meeting. So this will be a second reading for the updated policy 5512 against a, to confirm the new report that the state wants on each of.
We're going to move to public comments. Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Word policies 0164 and 0167, establish and regulate the right of public participation in public meetings. This is a portion of our meeting that any member of the public has three minutes to share a comment or question or concern. If you're interested in speaking, please raise your hand. And we turn on the camera and state your name and address. Seeing none, we're going to go to our action items and vote in these items underneath the page. So Michelle, we'll come back to you for critical instructions. Yes, that might include items number one through three.
Second.
Ms. Casalton?
Yes.
Ms. Semerostie? Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Tina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
And then we move on to finance, oh, literally, we move on to finance facilities, mark and remove your items.
Yeah, I'd like to move items one through 17. Second.
Second. Ms. Casalton?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Tina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
And personnel communication.
So I'd like to move items more through 20.
Second. Ms. Casalton?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Tina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
And policy and regulation.
Yeah, I'd like to move item number one. Now I'm looking for Darcy, so maybe she could get the vote one more time. All right, let's go ahead and guess, did I get a second?
Second.
Okay.
Ms. Casalton?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Tina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, we move to any layup on reports, anybody involved in the media organizations that they're partnered with here? Want to share some information?
There was a Middlesex County meeting that both Mike and I attended remotely. And it was a lot of information about some concerns that you might see being in a foreseeable future. But honestly, I felt, I don't know, I felt like we covered all of those.
In the security meeting, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes. So it was a good meeting, although I have really nothing to report.
Anybody else or any layups on reports? Nope. Okay. The point of the present report, the only call that I wanted to share was we're getting really close to changing the start times for schools, for our school release start times. Not sharing too much, it's going to come out in January. I share it because what I've been following, either going or helping Christina, is how successful the CLT, central leadership team and the student leadership team, the collaborative model it just pretty works on, which, you were talking about before. The, I guess through that labor collaborative that we've come apart out, it's really been fascinating to watch. That, you know, recommendations came through, I mean, transportation's been a big issue here on Mondays in January, if it comes to me, which looks like we're real close. It went back to the student leadership teams, they, they really worked with all the staff in their schools to get people on board to the idea. Coming back to central leadership team, all those things. And all those, all those components working with our school leadership, with those, you have the administration. It's really moving us in a very successful, could potentially very successful direction, it's pretty exciting to watch. So certainly commemorative leadership, and of course, the teaching association, right? So the association has made a huge contribution to this as well. So it is exciting to watch, it's a teaser, but in January, I think there'll be some findings, that's my prediction. It's got a few more hurdles to get through, but it's definitely working really well, I think the whole system is. Any old business? And, oh.
I think it's better for new business, sorry.
And new business first.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, and new business?
Thanks, this is probably something I should have raised before we voted, but I would have voted the same way. Concerning the field trips, so my kid went on the field trip to Montreal and I understand that we can follow UN field trip. And that was another one coming up in Philly, it looks like it's three nights in a hotel. It was incredibly expensive, even given that we, I think, fund students on free end-of-year lunch. I mean, just buying meals at restaurants three times a day, buying clothes, you know, that look nice. I'm wondering, is there any way we can provide more of a stipend to kids with lower incomes? Because I just, I mean, it was the kind of thing where if I, if I were alone with a family, I just wouldn't be like, oh, well, there's no way I could do that. It's just not enough for us to just pay for the hotel. And I don't know how I'd go about doing that. Maybe literally just some money for those kids to buy breakfast, lunch and dinner, breakfast, lunch and dinner, breakfast, lunch and dinner.
For meals?
Yeah, for meals, I mean, they're not going to grocery stores, they're going to restaurants. And I think we probably spent good $500 in addition to the hotel, blah, blah, blah. And literally my kids, they don't have any nice clothes, they go out and buy suits, you know, cheap suits, but suits. I know that's not going to change things, not going to attract and broaden our audience to follow you in this year. Maybe over time, it would start to be less of a, seen as less of a sort of unattainable rich person's club. If we could look into that.
Absolutely, to hear that. That was the same thing that we did down in town. When we have, you know, clothes made available, it's possible that we could do that. I know having kids in mom and I have, you know, suits, like I can put in two closets for.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So maybe there is some, and I know a lot of parents are on that Facebook page where I think it's called Buy One to Highland Park.
Yeah.
There always seems to be someone getting for something lovely.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't know if we could pull out through social media when it looks like that, that might help.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be great, but we gotta somehow systematize it, so it's just sort of the expectation that like, if you want to do this activity, you can do it. You know, because right now, it's, it's just not affordable for anybody who's not extremely passionate, like, oh, extremely. And that, I mean, it's not like just, I don't know if they're going to do the New Brunswick Hyatt thing that they used to do. I mean, I'm not sure why we're doing all these super expensive trips to Montreal. And you know, this wasn't because of the Model UN, I love the Model UN kids, my kid is one of them, but this wasn't like a result of like a national championship. You know, where they like went up to a tournament level and it was a really exciting opportunity, it's probably a buddhala. I mean, a fun learning, educational buddhala. But it was like a fun field trip for my kid. It didn't need to be in Montreal. I don't want to take that away from him, but it does feel a little, oh, I kid got to go to Montreal, then you need to go to Montreal? Not really, but you know, we can afford it. And now we're going to Philadelphia, I think we're in a hotel, that's, you know. I, I get it when, you know, the orchestra has like, you know, made some kind of championship or whatever. It's really special for the kids, you know, they finally got there, they're going to play in a national competition, but that's not what this is. So what we can do to make these things more affordable. And second, I think even that, not going to Montreal, not spending three nights in a hotel in Philly, I don't think it's necessary. So.
I can say like, I think the other side of that would be that we're talking about diversifying, making these clubs accessible, that those opportunities are really good to provide, which I know you're not saying they are, but I think the point is to, that we find a way to make sure all the kids get fit without having to be strayed by their families. And so that's like systematically how do we do it? I could just say personally, like they want to be seated, like to receive again some of these sort of supports for my non-employment club activity. I was never like a hand-me-down sort of, I'm going to donate something to you, like, you know, if you're going to have money to be able to provide the opportunity, whether it's a parent, or students, happens for that at least, there's a feeling of I'm going there with my own set of tools.
Yes, yes.
You know, if I was able to purchase, whether it was through funding, I was giving to my child, it's a permit.
Yeah, like a pretty over there.
But I think just leveraging like, feel like that would be helpful.
Yes.
So that can still maintain those opportunities, but again, this is the point, to make sure that they're not exclusive, that not everyone can participate because of that. I would just say this gives take away those opportunities to travel.
Yes.
To get kids out of, you know, out of park, I mean, not hopping out of out of park, out of New Jersey into Canada, those are really great experiences. I think we should really work a lot of pain and just make sure we have support for those.
Oh, I mean, I think so too, I love traveling. I thought, you know, this trip is not a bunch of kids who have been out of New Jersey. It was a bunch of kids who spent a lot of time out of New Jersey for the most part.
Much of the club itself.
Right, right, but if we can't, if we can't get this stuff sort of systematized so that people can go, I, I don't know, like my kid doesn't really need another opportunity to go to Montreal. He just doesn't. I mean, I hope that we can systematize it so that everybody can afford to go, that would be fantastic. But if that's not possible, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just think, I wonder, I don't know, I just think we don't even have enough information to know against what all the barriers are in terms of participation in that club, like are kids who are not really thinking about, I'm not going to have to go to a trip or not. I don't, I don't know, we don't necessarily know that, but I think it's better we're doing work around our, the dynamics of our clubs and trying to make sure that people know that there's a club for them somewhere, even if that's about them, from all the ideas or the club activities. Does that make it not possible for them or, you know, to make love with that? But I don't know, I think this is tied into that conversation, I don't want to make a question about why certain demographic is not participating in a certain club.
Right. You know, I totally agree, I think that these things do kind of tend to sort of have a self-suffilling cycle though. I mean, if for years on end, Model UN is not accessible to people financially, then my guess is a lot of people are going to be less likely to think of it as a club they're going to be excited to go to. I mean, not necessarily, maybe, maybe most, maybe lower income folks just are not interested in Model UN. But I, I don't know, when I was in school, certain clubs developed reputation. You know, oh, this is like the traveling club, you know, they're, I went to a private school for a while in, overseas and you know, there were certain clubs I just would never join because they were really expensive, they were for the rich kids. And I don't know if that, if there's some generational impact, you know. Everybody knows Model UN is for kids that, you know, can afford to go to Montreal. But you're right, maybe, maybe even with perfect affordability, nobody would be interested. I don't know, it's definitely possible, yeah.
Thank you, any other new business? Okay, we're going to move to public comment. Last time, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation, public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Word policies 0164 and 0167, establish and regulate the right of public participation. A couple of things, anybody who'd like to speak, please raise your hand and turn the camera on. And seeing none, then I'm going to go to the adjutant.
Second.
All fair.
Hi, Rob.
Thank you, everybody.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.